Yeah, I guess so, green light.
Oh.
Yep, sound, we're good.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting of the South Burlington City Council to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask Major General Steve Cray to lead us in that.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is agenda review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in order of the agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on. I would just like to note that Counselor Pat Noack is probably still in the air, trying to get back. She's been at the airport since 3:00 a.m. this morning. She was on a vacation in Florida and had thought she could get back here in time for this meeting, so she's doing her darndest to do that. She will be at some point, presumably after she lands, in Plattsburgh. Join us by cellphone, and we're not certain how good that connection is, so I apologize ahead of time. They apparently don't have the same kind of fiber optics or whatever in the middle school as we have in City Hall, so, but we did agree to have a larger venue to accommodate all of you, so we went on one side and it's a challenge on the other, but we will try to make her heard and her able to hear all of you as best as possible. Are there any comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Then we will start, and I'd like to kind of start by outlining for everyone the process and the time allocation for this meeting tonight, so you all understand how we're going to run this. I'll start with the sole topic for tonight's public hearing is really limited to two questions. What is the best approach or approaches for South Burlington to take to both fully understand the potential health, safety, and noise impacts from the pending F-35 basing, and relatedly, how best can we pay for or receive appropriate compensation or funds to address safety, health, and noise impacts? We will address those questions through the resolutions that will be offered by the council and were included in the packet for tonight's meeting, as well as, not really a resolution, but Counselor Noack had presented some action steps, so we'll take those as a separate kind of item, not a resolution, but action steps. All comments should be related to these topics. The process, the alleged conflicts of interest or meeting law violations have been dealt with and are not part of tonight's hearing, so let's just focus on what is before us. Each counselor will have 10 minutes to present their resolution or action steps, in case of Pat, and their reasoning behind the proposal, and that would take us, excuse me, to approximately 7:30. And at that time, we'll start the public input process. Major General Cray asked to speak on behalf of the VTang, and I said that would be fine, and I would like him to start, and you'll have a few more minutes. You said you needed five minutes, and I will give you that certainly as a courtesy. Public input following Major General Cray will follow, there'll be a limit of two minutes per person. The speakers will alternate between those opposed to joining the lawsuit in any manner and/or support other actions, and then the other side, those who advocate joining the lawsuit and/or other actions. Preference will be given to residents and then property owners who live inside the city. I failed to bring the sign-up sheet from the last meeting, and I understand that many people had signed up then and waited a long time that night, and we never got to that. So we'll do an honor system, and if you had signed up last week, we'll start with you in the same process. So if you know you signed up last week, when it's time for input, please raise your hand, and, I mean, I guess I could say, who would like to speak in favor of joining the lawsuit, and those people can raise their hand, and we'll go through the list that way, and then get to the sign-up sheet. We've allocated, I've expanded a little, but 90 minutes available for this portion. I think that should be enough. We'll use a timer again, and we'll also use some cards, the yellow to indicate you 15 seconds left, so you can think about wrapping up, and the red is, please finish that sentence. Yes, you have a question?
Would anything possible, if there are outside organizations speaking either in favor or against the resolution, if they identify the group that they belong to?
Well, why don't we wait and see if the residents speak for, we can get through all the-
Right, but I mean, if they're not residents.
If there's still time, we can open it to other comments. I'd be happy to do that.
Look, I'm interested more in the identification for saying-
Oh, I understand, I'm sorry.
-the Greater Burlington Industrial Council.
Okay, we can ask people if they have an affiliation. We probably don't need the front row to tell us what their affiliation is. You look, we saw them this afternoon, and you look really spiffy tonight. You looked okay this afternoon, but you're all dressed up tonight, but that would be fine if people would like to or would be willing to do that. Then after following the public input, the council will have their final deliberations and will vote on whatever resolutions, we'll vote on all of them offered, and see what is approved or not. And the last thing, I just want to set the tone, and I did last week, and I'll do it again. Civility, tone, and respect for different, differing viewpoints will certainly be requested from the public, as well as all counselors. I have a gavel this week. I'm hoping there will be no need to use it, but I will use it to make sure that our discourse is civil and respectful. Democracy is a really messy process. It rarely, if ever, results in a law, or an action, or a policy that responds affirmatively to every point of view. We are a diverse nation, a diverse community, and that is one of our great strengths. Civil discourse remains fundamental to our freedom. The intent of our founding fathers and mothers, I might add, is worth fighting for by civilians who choose to raise their hands in opposition, like tonight, as well as those in the military who took an oath to uphold our Constitution and defend our freedoms, and counselors, the four and hopefully the fifth one will arrive, who also took an oath to determine the best possible course of actions for the well-being of our city and its residents. We must acknowledge the diversity of opinions surrounding the lawsuit issue and respect those differences. I sincerely thank you all for participating in person, through social media, and phone calls. I think I can say for the entire council that each and every one was read, the articles and links reviewed, and they will help inform our decision tonight. So I'd like to begin, and Tom, would you like to share your proposal?
Sure.
10 minutes, please, or less.
Sure. So I have an opening statement regarding all that we're considering tonight. I fully support committing attention and resources to noise mitigation solutions for all buildings in close proximity to the airport. I fully support continuing our preparations to ensure first responders are ready for all airport-related contingencies, both current and prospective. But I do not support committing the City of South Burlington, all of its residents, to a private lawsuit against the U.S. government designed to stop the F-35, and I don't support taking action on any of these resolutions tonight at all. A resident caught me yesterday afternoon and asked me, what was going on with this topic, and why are we rushing to take action? I couldn't answer him. He made a really good point. He highlighted how we, the council, have to go to the public for approval on any long-term debt obligations, like how this past Monday, we discussed, and we are now going to the public this fall for a $1.9 million bond to finance emergency responder communications equipment. We are going to you to ask if we can take out a bond for $1.9 million. The basing of the F-35 is a multimillion-dollar question with known widespread public interest. For the same reason we go to the public for approval of long-term debt, we need to go to the public for any decision related to this multimillion-dollar topic with far-reaching implications for the future of our region. Secondly, we have missed the window to join this lawsuit, but we still have options that can be deliberately considered. We can join during an appeal if there is a reason to do so. Now, I heard at our last meeting that we'll only have that option if there is an appeal. What's important to note, that if there's no appeal, the matter would be resolved, so we wouldn't have to join. Also, we, if the city feels aggrieved for any reason, now, next month, a year from now, in 2019, in 2024, we have the full option to pursue litigation at that time if all other avenues of communication and collaboration are exhausted or failed. I move that we table all of the resolutions before us tonight, and instead commit to paying attention to the legal proceedings of this lawsuit, to thoughtfully evaluate our interests in the future regarding the matters of this very important issue. I don't think we need any of these resolutions passed tonight to move forward on this important issue.
So are you with Ryan?
I would like, I move to table my resolution and all resolutions.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, we'll continue. Would you like to discuss your resolution or not? That's up to you.
I would really like the public to have more time to discuss these things.
Okay. All right. Tim, do you want to?
Sure. Now, would you like me to read my resolution as well, and then give my statement?
I think we gave everyone copies, and it was posted on the web, so I think the highlights, the intent-
Right.
-and why and how you arrived at this issue.
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I also would like to thank everybody for coming. It's really great to see everybody here. Unfortunately, not everybody's here for something that would be less controversial than this, but here's what I wrote today. Tonight, I am suggesting what I feel has the best possible outcome for everyone in our community. I am proposing that the City of South Burlington participate in the F-35 NEPA litigation as amicus curi, and here's why. There are two key facts in the F-35 beddown that need to be acknowledged by the city. Firstly, the issue of increased noise will be a factor in the quality of life for many residents in the city. Noise is a great degrader of quality of life. Living in the vicinity of an airport can be a, can be challenging alone, but to have fighter jets in the mix only increases that challenge. Winuski was so concerned with this noise issue that they decided to join as a plaintiff in the lawsuit on that one item. In addition to residents, the effect of noise on the Chamberlain Neighborhood Elementary School is extra cause for alarm, as it will greatly affect the educational experience of our children. I think it's time the city recognizes we may have an incompatible use on our hands. And since it appears that the F-35 is coming regardless of some groups' protestations, we have to prepare for it, and mitigation is the only tool that we have. I always want to acknowledge the deep respect that we all hold for the Vermont Air National Guard. These men and women faithfully execute their patriotic duties on a daily basis for our defense. Their concerns are important, and at the same time, we need to keep in mind the well-being of the community adjacent to their base, a community of families and children that live with the daily noise of the base's practice. Secondly, this new plane is arriving with a much lower operating experience level than the F-16, which creates risks, including a higher probability that it may crash. And that being the case, it is imperative that our public safety personnel are completely educated about the possible effects of a fire in the event of a crash. Now, with these two points in mind, and knowing the utter divisiveness that this issue has on the community, I think that participating as amicus curi is the best solution at this time. It shows supporters for the plaintiff that the city cares about their case and believes it is in the best interest of the community as a whole. At the same time, it assuages the Vermont Air National Guard supporters, who do not want the city to be an actual plaintiff. You might see this proposal as a compromise that leaves no party completely happy, but that is often the best definition of a compromise. Yes, the city will spend some money on outside counsel, but it is small and a reasonable sum to achieve the best possible outcome, which is peace of mind for everyone. Thank you.
Okay. I also have a resolution. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's pretty straightforward, and I don't believe it should be controversial. There are impacts from noise with military planes flying at BIA. They have, these impacts have not been addressed fully since the F-16s began their mission. Noise has been cited as a problem and drawback for Chamberlain School, although I want to be clear, the school board has not made any decision about closing Chamberlain, but they've been complaining about the noise for a good long time. Health and safety risks and impacts from the new basing of the F-35 need to be addressed, in my opinion. Neither the health and safety risks nor the noise have clear and sufficient federal dollars for remediation. I believe the Air Force is responsible and should be held accountable financially for addressing those issues. So what my resolution does is directs our congressional delegation to obtain the funding required. It should not be at the expense of the South Burlington taxpayer alone. The airport and the air guard are really important state assets. Our schools and homes in South Burlington are assets that need to be protected as well. I believe this proposal should be adopted and can run parallel to joining as amicus curi with Winuski at all, so it's kind of a second proposal. So I would be supporting the amicus brief, or the amicus-
Resolution.
-position, as well as a resolution that really directs our congressional delegation to work on finding dollars for noise mitigation, as well as health and safety. Okay. And Counselor Emery?
Yes. I'm going to withdraw my resolution, giving, given yours and, yours and Tim's resolutions, but I did prepare a statement in order to explain my support of both Counselor Barrett's and Chair Reilly's resolutions. We have now had nearly three weeks to consider the invitation from a South Burlington resident and plaintiff in the lawsuit. Chair Reilly laid out her reasoning for bringing this question before the council and public on Monday, June 6th. I fully concur with the statement she made that evening on the timing and her sincere belief that, quote, "The issues were clear, simple, enormously important to the health and safety of our residents and emergency personnel, and that no one would disagree that these must be addressed." Just as it is the duty of the Vermont Air National Guard to serve and protect Vermont, and when called upon, the nation, it is our duty as representatives of the City of South Burlington to ensure the safety, well-being, and financial wholeness of this city, its residents, and employees. The Vermont Air National Guard clearly has a proud tradition of service, one that we can all take pride in and be grateful for. That is not in question tonight, and has not been throughout these successive discussions. While some on the political side of this discussion have sought to sensationalize the, quote, "clear, simple, enormously important health and safety issues before us," or have misinformed the public or created unnecessary distractions and made unfounded accusations, the question before us tonight remains the following. Does South Burlington have an interest in this lawsuit, and would our interests be served in the case of a favorable judgment? To my mind, the answer is yes. As either a party plaintiff or an amicus curi, friend of the court, we would be stating our clear interest in the lawsuit and giving more weight to the plaintiff's request for this information, thus increasing the chances of receiving it. If, as we have been trying to do for six years now, we then receive critical information from the U.S. Air Force, we would be able to collaborate actively as fully informed partners with the Vermont Air National Guard on mitigation and emergency response plans. We would have a basis on which to seek additional training and gear for our emergency personnel, a basis on which to seek additional sound insulation for Chamberlain Elementary School, or funds if relocation is deemed to be necessary by the public and school board. When contacting our congressmen, we could make requests from a position of knowledge and clarity with regard to the issues and risks facing us. In other types of trials, party plaintiff status would give us the advantage of having access to all evidentiary information and discovery. This advantage of party plaintiff status is not applicable to this type of trial, the goal of which is to receive supplemental information. The party plaintiffs have been able to obtain through a court order access to the administrative record that pertains to the basing. They have shared this record with the public. Therefore, I am of the opinion that participating as an amicus is sufficient, and that by agreeing to participate in the lawsuit, we would be acting responsibly to encourage the release of the requested information with little investment of money, or time, or energy from the city's legal team. Further, of the numerous emails and phone calls I've received from South Burlington residents, and I believe all of us have received from South Burlington residents and property owners, and these are self-identified, 65% have urged us to join the lawsuit. On a personal note, I wish to repeat something I wrote when on the campaign trail, and I quote, "The F-35 basing is out of the council's hands, and nothing or no one can put it there, period. Why make this non-issue the centerpiece of your campaign? Can we please move on to the issues of the day, and this includes but is not limited to noise mitigation for Chamberlain Neighborhood?" I stand by that statement. And add that at the time, I did not even know participating in this lawsuit was possible. No invitation had been made. That only came two months ago. I had not read the court briefs or been briefed by city staff and air guard staff, and based on all of this inquiry, I'm concerned for our residents and first responder safety. I have the plaintiffs to thank for indicating what questions I should be asking. There has not been full and ready disclosure, but rather reaction, to the information being put out by the plaintiffs in the suit. We should not sit easy with the thought that the Air Force will give us the information we need now, and that we need only ask for it. The U.S. Air Force made public in January 2015 critical information regarding the F-35's high-risk profile due to the high percentage of composites in its structure, but the city only received this information when the plaintiffs released it on Monday, June 6th. It is only because of the discussions surrounding this lawsuit that composites became a topic of consideration and dialogue between the city and the air guard. The lab report, again, that was published in 2015, but that we became aware of on June 6th, discusses the blaze of a B-2A, which corroborates the plaintiff's brief further detailing the casualties. Two first responders dead due to toxic fumes, and five permanently disabled. The 2015 lab report further gives details on required personal protective equipment, including, and I quote, "chemical protective clothing and neoprene coveralls to minimize exposure to all airborne species," which neither the guard firefighting company nor our South Burlington department has. According to the administrative record and U.S. Air Force personnel, and I quote, "It is doubtful mutual aid partners are fully trained in responding to incidents with composite materials." End of quote. We learned today that our fire department does not have the training in aircraft firefighting training, sorry, which requires 150 hours of additional training per year. We also learned today that first responders are regularly called upon to do decontamination and cleanup. Shouldn't we know all the risks before putting our first responders in front of a worst-case scenario, a crash? Especially knowing that, quote, and this comes directly from the final EIS statement, "The F-35 will have a crash rate on takeoff or landing that substantially exceeds that of commercial aircraft." Our airfield is very short, so takeoff and landing can happen outside of that airfield, and our, our first responders would be there. I cannot compare an F-35 to an Airbus or Boeing because of the crash statistics. Some citizens have pointed to the process and the divisiveness of the F-35 basing as reasons to vote against participating in the lawsuit. As a city official, I see that we must balance these considerations with several other considerations: the lack of information forthcoming from the U.S. Air Force and our congressional delegation in spite of our numerous past attempts, our responsibility to preserve the financial wholeness of our city's residents, our budget limits, our capital investment plan, and our duty to protect the health and well-being of our residents and city employees. The arguments of those cautioning us against joining the lawsuit are political. The arguments on the other side of the balance are financial and moral. I therefore choose to look at the other side of the balance. Going back to my campaign pledge to include noise mitigation for Chamberlain Neighborhood among the issues to be placed before the council elected in March, I now add "safety preparedness" to that list based on information confirmed just over the past three weeks. Given the Vermont Air National Guard's role in this nation's defense, I believe as your city representative that the mitigating cost for the basing of the F-35 here at Burlington International Airport should not be borne by our 18,000 residents, but by all of the United States taxpayers. The safety risks outlined in the draft EIS, the FEIS, and the Air Force's academic record have named enough risk for me to state my support for the two resolutions. And just as concluding comments, in view of these risks known through the draft EIS, the FEIS, the U.S. Air Force administrative record, a laboratory report, and legal discovery in the Guam case, I find it unconscionable that we would not seek to the fullest of our ability to have complete disclosure of the safety risks that accompany the basing of the F-35 at Burlington International Airport. Our citizens and first responders are not and should not be treated as guinea pigs. While some members of this council encourage us to limit our action to political maneuvers, I believe that the legal tool available to us today is the strongest tool we have in order to receive the information required for our city to be an active and fully informed partner with the Vermont Air National Guard, and to engage in meaningful dialogue with our senators and representative to Congress on our financial needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't want to speak for Pat Noack, but I do want, because we're moving along here, and she hasn't even been able to call in yet, but I would like to just outline what she has written in terms of what she sees as next action steps, so when you testify or present your thoughts, you can include a response to these if you wish. As I see it, she outlined a number of questions that some are not still addressed, in her mind, and then regarding noise, she proposes the following non-litigious next steps. Continue supporting the pursuit of mitigation grants from the FAA by the Burlington International Airport. Two, work with the Director of Aviation at BTV as he assembles a committee to keep open lines of communication and collaboratively work on issues related to noise. And next steps for safety is she, one, support our city manager's continuous outreach to the VTang Fire and Rescue, Vermont Emergency Management, local area fire and rescue chiefs, and update on safety procedures now or in the future, including those updates related to any change in aircraft. Two, ask VTang Fire and Rescue, Vermont Emergency Management, and the South Burlington Fire Chief to make presentations to the council on our safety concerns as appropriate under the city manager's behest. And three, inquire from VTang, at what point in the standard process of introducing new aircraft is the local community informed and first responders trained on changes to relevant, relevant safety protocols and procedures? And I'm sure Pat will have some additional comments. So those are- So those are, I guess, three, well, two, two proposals and some other action steps from Councilor Nowak that I think are on the table for adoption by the council tonight. So I would like to open the public hearing and begin with Major General Cray.
Is this, can you hear me? How's that? Is that better?
That's good. We can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to make a statement on behalf of the nearly 4,000 men and women of the Vermont National Guard and their families. I'm here tonight to let the council know that in my opinion, as leaders, we need to work collaboratively and not against each other as we address the concerns of our community. The nearly 1,100 Vermont airmen, along with their families, volunteer every day to wear the uniform in service to our country. They live in this community. They go to the same schools, the same churches, and they shop in the same stores. As the Adjutant General, it is my responsibility to make sure that they are prepared to carry out their assigned mission. The mission of the 158th Fighter Wing is to protect and defend the citizens of Vermont and the United States. My responsibility includes making sure that they have the right people with the right skills and the right equipment. Make no mistake, these airmen, your neighbors, your family and friends, they train rigorously to maintain the highest level of tactical and technical proficiency and readiness. These men and women, their hard work is the reason that the Vermont Air National Guard has been chosen to receive the newest equipment to defend our nation. One concern I know the council has is composite material and emergency response. We are all aware composite materials are being used more and more in both civilian and military aircraft. Their lightweight and high strength make the use of composite material desirable in aviation. Handling of composite materials does require extra training and equipment, and our fire department has the latest equipment for aircraft firefighting and rescue to include the new P-34 Rapid Intervention Vehicles, which were received in 2014 and 15. The firefighters are also trained in composite hazards and firefighting techniques. Our firefighters and those of Burlington and South Burlington train together for a response to an aircraft accident. They are also part of an annual review of the airport emergency plan, and they participate in the triannual full-scale airport emergency response exercises. I can say with confidence that our Air National Guard Fire Department, the South Burlington Fire Department, and the Burlington Fire Department are equipped and trained to respond to all civilian and military aircraft made with composite materials that might fly into our airport. The air guard is the largest tenant on the airfield, and has already indicated that we will participate in community organized groups to address airport activity concerns to include flight safety and noise mitigation. The air guard takes flight safety very seriously, and the rigorous safety standards are second to none, and we have the track record to prove it. Regarding noise mitigation, there are two distinct parts, one we control, the air guard, and one administered by the Burlington International Airport, and we are committed to both. We have and we will continue to fly our aircraft in the safest and least noise-producing patterns as we arrive and depart Burlington International Airport. After the recorded decision made in December of 2013, we issued our mitigation and management plan. Part of that plan is submitting updated flight data for the noise exposure mapping, and we will work closely with Director of Aviation Gene Richards and the Burlington team to provide the most accurate and up-to-date data regarding our flight patterns for use in all available noise mitigation programs. I am fully aware and share the councils and the communities' concerns with regard to noise and noise mitigation, and we will do our part to minimize the impact. I know our communities are grateful for the service of our air guard, and applaud them for their professionalism, and congratulate them on being chosen as the first Air National Guard reunit to receive the F-35. These are the men and women that the governor will call at a moment's notice to render assistance to our citizens of Vermont. They are everyday heroes, and I'm proud, very proud, to represent them. Let's continue to work together on incorporating the air guard mission into our local community. The men and women that we represent deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. So before we begin, and it looks like, I think, we'll have plenty of time to hear everyone who signed up. I have approximately 43 people who have signed up tonight, some of which I understand had signed up last week. So if, I'd like, I would ask that, if you wish to speak and you signed up last week and did not sign up tonight, would you please raise your hands? So we just have one person. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there another two? Is there just two?
Raise your hand.
I just see two. Did you see a third one? Oh, maybe someone's head is in the way. Maybe there's three. Okay. So this looks good. So why, I'm sorry.
I was wondering where the sign up was for tonight. I didn't see.
Oh, it was in the front table. Did you wish to sign up?
Yeah, I did not see that. I just came to.
All right. Well, now's your time. Or maybe, you know what, when I get to the end, I'll just, I'll remember, I'll ask if there's anyone. Yes.
What about the ones who signed up last week?
Right. That's what I just asked. If you, if you signed up last week and did not sign up tonight, please raise your hand, because I'd like to call on you first, and then we'll go to this list. So, is that still the same people? Three? Is there more? I guess.
I think it's still the sign up.
I signed up both.
Oh, you signed up both, so you're covered. Okay.
You'll sign up tonight?
Yes, you can.
Where?
Well, I have them, because I need the names, so when we get through these, I will ask if there's anyone else who would like to, because I think we'll have plenty of time. Okay? Does that sound fair enough? All right. So we'll start with the sign up sheet tonight. And why don't we start with Linus Levens? And if you have any affiliation with an organization, would you please state that? So it's clear, this is two minutes.
Could they also tell us if they live in the city?
Yes. I typed that on the sheet, but yes, I can say that.
Yes, I've lived in South Burlington since 1957. I'm a property owner in the Chamberlain Neighborhood.
Can everyone hear Linus?
I'm a property owner in the Chamberlain Neighborhood and have children in the South Burlington school systems, including Chamberlain School. Green ribbons for the F-35 has paid for full-page color ads in local papers fraught with lies and distortions that need responding to. GRF-35 calls the lawsuit frivolous. The lawsuit is a serious attempt to get information from an intransigent, intransigent U.S. Air Force concerning the real impacts on noise and safety in South Burlington. GRF-35 says this action is contrary to the wishes of a majority of Vermonters. Our freedom as a people is guarded by our constitutional republic, which is designed to protect the minority from oppression by a majority. Chamberlain Neighborhood property owners are clearly an embattled minority. VTANG has a safe-flying record, but I have lived to see two military jet crashes in South Burlington. Community members and first responders need to know what we're getting into. The EIS for the F-35, published in May of 2013, in my opinion, was based on faulty data deliberately skewed to obtain sighting. GRF-35 claims once again that the community has built up around the airport. VTANG's first headquarters was in the old Eldridge one-room schoolhouse. At every step, the U.S. Air Force and the airport have taken more and more properties. In 1951, when the landing strip was extended to accommodate jets, 68 parcels of land totaling 199 acres were taken, and 17 families had to move their homes or have them torn down. Heavy-handed tactics by the GRF-35 seek to crush opposition voices by establishing themselves as the majority opinion, but taking a hidden property value without compensation and the potential closing of our neighborhood elementary school due to a change in military hardware is reason enough to ask questions. I urge you to join the suit. Mitigation is not compensation. If a homeowner accepts mitigation funds, will that disqualify them for filing for compensation?
Thank you. Jack Kieranin from Lime Kiln Road, South Burlington. Just tilt it down. There you go.
Good evening, and, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am responding to whether or not they should enter the lawsuit, to consider intervention. My response is this, my thoughts are as follows. With information already known, that information from the previous meeting in June 13th, where the lawyers and the attorney for the city spoke, I believe intervention at this time will most likely not have as much impact that you're looking to receive. The hearing is July 5th, and I believe right now engaging the, our representatives at this time would probably be the better alternative. The lawsuit itself, to my understanding, is simply getting the Air Force, the Secretary of the Air Force, to release the information for the environmental impact statement or study. I believe that we should look to the Secretary of the Air Force to either update or revise the environmental impact statement and/or study. I don't believe that engaging in this lawsuit right now is going to really have much of an impact. It's the fourth quarter, you've got five minutes left in the game, so I really don't believe that it's going to have the impact. And again, the lawsuit itself is what I'm focused on. Everything else that I'm hearing is important, but the actual lawsuit and getting the information that the city council needs, I believe, would better be accessed through Senator Patrick Leahy or some of the other senators, Senator Bernie Sanders. So I'm not in favor of the lawsuit for those basic reasons, that you're really not going to get what you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Hubbard from Woodbine Street in South Burlington.
Back up it goes. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate the fact that regardless of what the city council decides here, we've raised the issue of safety implications of this, and I have passed out, it's on the seats of everybody over on the right, and I ran out, so people on the left don't have all copies, there are extras over on the empty seats on the right. But I believe we should be making these decisions on safety with the best available information. We're all affected, it doesn't make a damn bit of difference whether we're for or against if we have an incident. A Class A incident is when there is damage involving loss of life or crippling damage to people, equipment, or property, and the Air Force defines that in addition as being $2 million or more. We can expect, in the first 10 years, that these planes are based here, the environmental impact statement makes it very clear, statistically, to have three Class A incidents, about one every three years. I don't want that to happen. I don't know where that will happen, but I seriously want, if and when it happens, us to be prepared. I don't want our police, or our fire first responders, or our civilians that are in the path of toxic fumes to die or risk impairment. It comes down to reading an Air Force document that is their Air Force Research Laboratory. It's titled Composite Material Assessment or Hazard Assessment at Crash Sites. It's dated 2015. It states, page nine, "The F-35s will be constructed with 42% advanced aerospate composites by weight," and it also states, page 11, that "everyone responding needs head to toe fully self-contained breathing gear and chemical protection suits." I want us to be prepared, and I appreciate that the Guard and South Burlington needs to work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Major Patrick Benner.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes. I think you can pull it towards you a little bit more, maybe? Yeah.
How about now?
That's great.
Madam Chairman, distinguished members of the city council, members of our military, both in and out of uniform, I gladly give up a few seconds of my time to say thank you for your service to my country. Ladies and gentlemen, I've lived in Vermont for 20 years, and I have never seen such a massive controversy over a non-issue. I testified at the hearings with the city council three years ago, and at that time, we heard situations like teachers having to stop their class and not being able to hear their students, and we basically had noise mitigation conversations. At that time, there was a little bit of controversy over the history of the F-35 and whether or not it was falling out of the sky. Friends and neighbors, I can assure you, Lockheed Martin is not in the business of creating aircraft that are going to fall out of the sky. You may have read reports from the initial prototype aircraft, however, that was in 2006 when that aircraft was first introduced to the United States. This is 2016, 10 years later. That was a prototype plane. We are now in Lockheed Martin F-35 multi-role fighter version C. That means engineering has increased, mistakes and bugs that were in that original aircraft have been worked out. It is not a problem. Your city council is being asked to join with the city of Winuski on a lawsuit. Even the city of Winuski is only joining one of 10 possible counts, and your city council is asking you to join all 10 counts. When one joins a lawsuit, there's an expectation of some sort of financial remuneration or justice being done. In this case, there's only cost to your city. There is no financial gain, there is no remuneration, there is no justice to be done. We are simply going to pay to do what three lawyers sat in the meeting on June 6th and told you, "Don't bother, don't waste your time, you're not going to win, you're fighting the federal government, and you're not going to get anything out of it." I submit to you, this is a total waste of time. We also heard three years ago about the...
Can you wrap it up? Last sentence?
Last sentence. The F-35 has a 1,000-gallon fuel tank, and we're concerned about its crashing and its capabilities of firefighting, yet the A320 Airbus leaves and departs and arrives at Burlington International Airport every day, 17 times a day, with a 19,000-gallon fuel tank and 20 times the composite material onboard, and we never say a thing. We speak about how the military is a benefit to us and this community, however, we seek to remove their futuristic tools of defense.
Thank you very much.
I submit, we say nothing about this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Chris Dunwoodie. I don't know where he lives. Are you a South Burlington resident?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
There's a reason why we've all decided to file into this windowless room on a beautiful afternoon, because we're all concerned about our sense of security, and we're faced with the challenge of having different points of view on ensuring that security. That said, I support the lawsuit, giving greater scrutiny to this first-of-a-kind basing decisions. Promises of an increased mitigation and increased rapid response to disaster does not calm my concerns, it actually validates them. I cannot help but see this up to our ears, in irony, by adopting this risky technology in the name of national security. There is a reason that maiden basings of sophisticated jets like this take place in isolated areas. The F-35 has a crash average of one per three years, and all F-35 supporters are supporting or defending a long-held and honorable tradition, and according to the Secretary of the U.S. Air Force, the highly skilled Green Mountain Boys will always have a mission and would be retrofitted with another fleet of F-16 if the F-35 does not come here, and the dedicated workers that help make that mission possible will continue to keep their jobs. But thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to everyone here for your service past and present.
Thank you. Howard Weisberg, Lupin Lane, is that South Burlington? Is Howard here? Oh. I'm going to, just so you know, skip over people who aren't residents in South Burlington, and then I will go back to them, so you're still on the list.
Hello, thank you for letting me address you. In the last city council's election of a couple of years ago, all the councilors that were against the F-35 were soundly defeated, removed from office in favor of the F-35 crowd. I believe, I find it inconceivable that you folks just found out after the election that we could join any lawsuit. I'm not saying I'm against the lawsuit, but I believe that by not mentioning it during the election, to me, it appears to be fraud by omission. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have the lawsuit, I think it should be left up to the people. There should be a referendum, we've got primary elections coming up in August, we've got national elections coming up in November, let the people of South Burlington decide. If they decide to go ahead with the lawsuit, I think that's fine. I don't know if it came up all of a sudden, why it has to be taken care of immediately, why can't it wait two months until we have elections? Let the South Burlington residents decide and go from there. That's all I have to say.
Oh, Ed Fisher from Country Club Drive.
Yes. We're the development adjacent, can everyone hear me?
No.
Okay. We're the development adjacent to the air guard here. And again, everyone supports the air guard, that's not the issue. I've lived here about 45 years in the development, my first and only home. Now, the noise level, we knew we were going to live next to an airport, so that's not really an issue. We tolerate the F-16s, but when I hear of an F-35 and the projection of four or five flights, unless I'm mistaken, the noise level alone will be a killer in terms of our development. I don't know what it'll mean to schools and the rest of the community. And so far, there's been a dearth of information that the public, you know, has gotten. Now, I can't believe that in all of the inventory of F-35s, they couldn't have brought one down here so we could experience the noise levels. We need the information the lawsuit will provide, it's that simple. We need it because if half of the projection of the flights they intend to station here, the air pollution is going to be tremendous, particularly in our development. It doesn't even take into account, and I remember, I'm old enough to remember the F-104, the Starfighter, and I don't know if the old timers here remember the 104, but it had a lot of developmental problems. And I suspect we're going to be seeing a lot of that with the F-35. In fact, the 104 is known as the Widowmaker by many of his pilots. So I'll leave you with that thought, and I'm for the lawsuit.
Jared Dalstrom?
Dalstrom.
I'm sorry, what?
Jared Dalstrom.
Oh, Dalstrom, okay. Iris Lane in South Burlington.
Yes, I live right behind Dorset Park in South Burlington, lived there about six years. I'm going to be very quick, I see a lot of people, a lot of notes, and I don't want to go till 11:30 tonight. I basically just support everything Counselor Chittenden said, completely against it, it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. I unfortunately feel like this is one of those situations where in South Burlington, the extremely vocal minority has made the very small majority that's against this have to come out on two separate occasions just to oppose this. And it's just a, as we heard last week, it's just not smart, and it's not a good use of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. And after Roddy, we'll hear Julie Richards, maybe that will help.
I'm speaking in support of the lawsuit, and I thank the councilors who are supporting it.
Speak louder.
Thank you. After studying the administrative record that came out after, thanks to the lawsuit, which I think has given us some very important information that we didn't have, the Air Force has said what has been rumored, but they admitted that, in fact Burlington was not the first choice, there were several others, but that it was, and this was in the administrative record, that there was many comments regarding Patrick Leahy insisting that this be the place. And I more than appreciate the prize that people that are Vermont Air National Guard would take in being the first, but I'm afraid that isn't really, that isn't right. And I also, I've sat through a number of meetings and really tried to do my homework, and really tried to listen, and I so credit all of you for having to listen as many more times than I have. But the other night, I felt as if the, those who were for the F-35s were very disruptive, and I thought it was rather ironic that you, Tom Chittenden, said that the tone was, you felt condescending of the lawyer, Jim Dumont, and then...
Can we keep your comments to the tacit hand?
Yes.
I think everyone heard that.
All right, but I was very disturbed by it. And I did, the administrative report that I was studying, I did call Leahy's office because I felt as if what was being said was just such a discredit to him, and I spoke to John Tracy, and he asked, "Would I please send that record to him?" And I did, so I was moved to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Richards. And following Judy will be Dean Laws on Hummingbird Lane, is that... Julie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Julie Richards, I'm a property... Thank you. I'm Julie Richards, I'm a property owner and business owner in the City of South Burlington, but most importantly, a proud citizen of the United States of America. I support the relationship we have with the National Guard, since we've had it since the 1940s, and look forward to continue that relationship as they are a vital part of our community. I understand there is a small group, and I emphasize, a small group, that would like the lawsuit. Having an opinion is a right, but please know having an opinion doesn't make one an expert. Reacting to opinion is, can be harmful and expensive, so please remember the importance of fact-checking. I don't want my tax dollars to be caught up in a lawsuit. I am actually saddened and disappointed by what is happening here tonight and what has been happening within this community. I'm asking the city councilors here of South Burlington to be leaders. A good leader is one that is able to put personal interests and bias aside and make a decision for the greater good of the community, as this is what you are elected to do. We can't react to unproven facts and scare tactics. I'm asking you tonight to vote opposing this lawsuit. I'm asking you to be an active ambassador for South Burlington. I'm asking you to work with the Guard, and most importantly, listen to the majority of the community members that are voicing the opposing of the lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Hummingbird Lane, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Good.
I'm Dean Laws, I'm from South Burlington. I agree with all the comments that the National Guard has spoken tonight.
Come really, pretend you're in a nightclub, you know?
Yeah, but I'm not a singer.
Well, you're a speaker though.
So I agree with all the comments that the National Guard have spoken tonight. I can't believe that we need to reinvent the wheel when it comes to this F-35. I think it's been invented, I think it's been practiced, used, demonstrated, so it's in a practical way to be here. I think it would be a huge detriment to the South Burlington and Burlington and all the areas surrounding if that F-35 wasn't here, and, well, if the National Guard wasn't here. So I agree with him entirely.
Thank you. Ray Gonda. I thought I was, but Dean signed up on the wrong sheet.
Yeah, I did, sorry.
So I am trying to alternate it, to be fair. But that's okay, we got to, we understand where you stand. Ray.
Madam Chairman, my name is Ray Gonda, I'm a property owner in South Burlington. I live in the Chamberlain neighborhood, well within the 65 decibel DNL zone, so I'm very familiar with the airport noise. To make a simple start, I support what you've proposed tonight, trying to get information through Senator Leahy by a formal proposal to him, but at the same time, support the amicus curi, I think it's a reasonable combination under the circumstances. I would have preferred you joined as a plaintiff, and just for full disclosure here, I am one of the plaintiffs in that private lawsuit that was instituted on behalf of the safety of the citizens of South Burlington, not private self-interest. So I guess that should, oh, one thing I did notice is that there's a discussion going on right now, you'll see it on the green ribbons thing, and you heard the general here talk about composites. Well, not all composites are the same. Composites that are, as far as I know, from what I've read, composites in commercial aircraft are not composites in, not the same composites in military aircraft. And so their fire characteristics with regard to toxins are very likely different. Second point I'd like to make is that no mention has been made of the stealth coatings on the F-35 and the danger if those burn. There have been three men killed already and two permanently incapacitated in developing those stealth coatings, and yet no mention of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Leon Brown, Ruth Street in South Burlington?
South Burlington resident, I've been a South Burlington resident for 51 years. I lived over on Berkeley Street along the skirts of Chamberlain School. I also, now I still live here over on Ruth Street, and so I've been around this city for, you know, a good many years. I, I'm against the lawsuit, and disregard any holdings on to this. Can't believe I'm even here at this meeting. Oh, sorry. I can't believe I even have to be here at this meeting to even, and Tom, thank you, military staff, thank you very much. I'm also, used to be Air Guard Fire Department, full-time firefighter. There's a full-time staff over there all the time, 24/7, just like City of South Burlington, Burlington, all the other area fire departments. Not only that, it turned out being that a member on a full-time staff at the Air Guard Fire Department, I was also a full-time staff on the City of South Burlington. So I've been both sides of the house. Training goes on all the time. The men, women, they're all there, they work their hearts out. They love what they take and do, and education continues on all the time. I look back, having saying that, how many car accidents happened today in the City of South Burlington? Nobody's talking about that. Well, you ought to turn and look at that situation here. Look at all the vehicles and what's traveling on the roads, the highways, seeing what that's carrying, and we're talking about one aircraft? Thank you very much for letting us speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Rose Klein or on... I'm sorry, what?
It's Anderson Parkway.
Anderson, is it Klein?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Recently, I've actually seen newscasts with CBS where Senator John McCain came forward and said he felt that the F-35 project was a behemoth and that the Pentagon should actually do away with it. It's costing taxpayers a fortune and that it's bludgeoning. We have, taxpayers are already paying so much for these military projects, and children in schools are going without pencils and paper and food. I know this because I have relatives who are teachers. And yet, we can't find the money for this, but we have money for the military complex to continue with projects. Lockheed Martin has actually got so many people involved in this, including our senators, who are actually taking kickbacks, which we know of. Just about everybody in this room who is in favor of this project is probably getting something in favor for being here. I really, I really, really think that we should support getting involved in this lawsuit, simply because we are all taxpayers already paying for this project, and if we're going to be involved in a lawsuit, we have to think about the ethical and moral standards that we really should be upholding here. Thank you.
Frank Shafi, oh, you're from Burlington, excuse me, let's wait. It's E. Diner, is that Ed Diner?
Eva.
Oh, Eva, excuse me.
She was on the wrong sheet.
Oh, was she on the wrong sheet? Well, all right, let's go down to...
She's coming.
Oh, okay.
My name is Eva Deener.
Would you get really close to the mic? In fact, if you take it out and hold it right against your lips.
Like this?
Oh, even closer.
All right. Tell me if you're still here. My name is Eva Deener, I lived here for 47 years in the Chamberlain area, and my children went there to school too.
A little closer. No, we can't. If you take it out and hold it.
Oh.
Like that, that's good, that's good. Right, right like that, that's good.
All right. I feel very strongly about the F-35s because they should not be in Chittenden County where we have the most population of Vermont. However, I don't object to it unless they change, give it another engine, and do something. The pilots take their lives in their hands every time they go out because it's still not safe. I support privately, and I've given to the lawsuit. I don't know if South Burlington should join it now, but see how it goes, and then let's go and join another suit. Anyway, this is all, thank you.
Thank you. Eva.
Bozen.
Who's them?
71 Oakwood Drive, 29 years. I'm against this lawsuit for a couple of reasons. One is the economic impact Vermont and Chittenden County, sending the message to our men and women in the military, Vermont Air Guard, and businesses that support, it's not a smart idea creating a business or family... that support, it's not a smart idea creating a business or family-friendly community. And I, I say any needs are created out of this military base should be through our congressmen and our senators, not a lawsuit. The safety issues for our first responders were addressed last meeting, June 13th, by the State's Fire Marshal Office. I would be more concerned of the public safety and environmental impact from the railroad that runs the oil and other chemicals along the lake and within our communities of Vermont than I am of the 35s. The noise issue is a non-issue for me. I have lived with this as part of living in these communities, whether it's South Burlington, Winuski, Burlington, wherever. We're close to the airport, we put up with it. If we don't like it, we move. So, everybody that moves here knows we have an airport in the backyard. Everybody knows that we have an air guard in the backyard also. So if you don't like it, don't move here. The noise is no worse now than it was in 1970. Personally, the noise is the sound of security for me. As a Vietnam combat veteran, I am sitting here tonight because of what the pilots, the support staff, and the jets do besides make noise. Thank you.
V. Campania on Dugald Street? First name, I can't read your writing.
Vivian.
Vivian, thank you.
Hi, I live on Dugald Street, which, um, was one of the ones left out on this, I don't know, propaganda issue, I guess.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Okay, thank you. Um, I support the lawsuit. Um, the noise issue is getting unbearable. We, I, my backyard, jets, backyard, two people on the airport, right?
Get closer to the mic.
And it's very noisy and it's not six minutes a day. There's landing and takeoff maneuvers that last all day long for those who oppose this, this city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I got you on the cell phone.
Thank you.
And, um, with a microphone here, so...
Okay.
They're taking testimony from residents.
Okay.
You brought that thing well out over the cafeteria.
I'm not surprised. Oh, welcome. Okay, so... The next person, um, let's see. Elizabeth, something whether on Autumn Hill Road. Oh, Goldberg, excuse me, I couldn't read your writing.
Can you hear me? Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been...
A little closer.
Okay. I have been a resident of South Burlington for 67 years, hate to admit. Um, I thank the Air Guard for the service that they provided. I believe they are partially responsible for us being able to have this democracy and this discussion today. A lot of the issues that have been brought up tonight, I agree with and I think we're all concerned about safety and, um, noise mitigation. But I do not believe the City Council should decide, um, to join this lawsuit. Nor do I think you have the responsibility to. I think it's the people's responsibility to decide to commit to the lawsuit and I believe that it should be a ballot issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next on the list is Jay Zatz on the, in support of joining the lawsuit, is that right? Okay. Oh, is there a hand up in the best, pardon me, yes? Oh, Todd, can you put your phone on mute?
I'll mute it right here.
We can mute it there.
Oh, we can mute it here, never mind.
I will, but I'm... Before a topic, it's not coming first. I cannot hear them, I can't hear them. I can't hear them, but I'll gladly put it on mute too. If you want, just remind people maybe to call me to the line. Or something, otherwise I can't hear them.
Okay, please, hold the mic maybe and put it right... You ever seen Madonna in a...
Yeah, I know, thank you.
Okay.
I do. My name's Jay Zatz. I've lived in South Burlington with my family for over 43 years in Country Club Estates. That's an eighth of a mile away from the Air National Guard. We brought up three young boys with no ill effects of the noise, which I call just an inconvenience. In my opinion, this litigation has to stop. I can almost predict who's gonna vote for it. The bottom line is, I don't want any tax money spent on this issue. If it was tax money, it should be voted by the public, not decided by the City Council. Some of you have received inaccurate information on the F-35. Why at the beginning did you not invite the Air Guard folks to come over, sit down, and get some straight answers instead of searching on the website and so forth? When a base commander of the Air Guard is selected, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but one of the requirements is that they be a pilot. Do you ever think that they would put any other pilots in a defective or dangerous situation? Or a situation that was bad for the public? I don't think so. I think that you represent, some of you who want this litigation, a small percentage of citizens of South Burlington. If you proceed with this litigation, I will tell you, you're gonna lose. This is not winnable. These lawyers are gonna win. Think box. Our military throughout the world defends our freedom every day. They give up time with their family, their friends, in most cases, work on dangerous assignments. I have been and still willing to get about six or more minutes a day for this freedom. Today, tomorrow, the next day. Do the right thing, defeat this litigation, thank you.
Steve Marriott? Steve Marriott, is he in the audience?
Hello? My name is Steve Marriott. My wife Loretta and I have lived on Mills Avenue since 1976. From 71 to 73, I served in the US Army. We were stationed in Alameda, California and lived in an apartment off-base. On February 7th, 1973, a military jet crashed four blocks from our apartment. We heard the scream of the jet, the explosion of impact, and felt the ground tremble. We could see and smell the toxic fire easily. Eleven people died, adults, kids, military people, and first responders. Fast forward to 2016. Several people, individuals, community groups have sent questions by letter, email, and phone to the Air Force for information about the dangers of an F-35 crash. The Air Force hasn't responded with adequate information. It is a moral imperative that we get this information to protect our citizens, military personnel, and first responders. The Air Force reports that newer planes crash more often. The F-35 is a newer plane and has a much higher risk of crashing. I support the resolution to get this information to make our communities safer when the F-35s do arrive. Safety first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, oh, Mike Semino?
Thank you for hearing me. I oppose us entering the lawsuit. I respect those who support us entering the lawsuit, uh, but I don't think it's the, uh, the right decision and I particularly don't think that the process that we've gone through has been in the best interest of our community. Uh, what kind of metrics does the Council employ when they want to make a decision? What kind of process do they want to engage in when they are going to invite the community to weigh in on a decision? What was the impetus for this original resolution being put on an agenda a few weeks ago? Who persuaded the Council to put that, uh, resolution on the agenda? If not for the community pushback, this resolution would have been voted on weeks ago with little community input or review. The way this was put forward is responsible for a great deal of acrimony in our community. And regardless of how anyone feels in this room, it's disappointing for me to have our community barking at one another, not respecting one another. It was unnecessary if the process was handled better. We've all heard, uh, the phrase that has to do with the journey and the destination. If we abandon respectful and transparent process and behavior, we've got a much bigger problem on our hands than how we choose to deal with the F-35. Thank you.
Ellen Powell? Is Ellen Powell here? No. She left? Okay. George Meili?
Good evening, name's George Meili, lived at 38 Gladwood Street for 39 years. I actually moved to that loc...
Right, right.
Actually moved to that location because I was a general aviation enthusiast, so, um, I was flying at the time. Uh, didn't realize that in 70s, from 77 until now, the airport would have grown as much as it did. Nor would I have imagined the type of military technology introduced into aircraft that is now today. From a pragmatic and process standpoint, um, a number of you know that, uh, I have an engineering background as well as a computer science background. And when you are faced with a problem, information is very, very important. Um, you decompose the problem, you collect information, and after that, you actually then draw conclusions and form new hypotheses. Uh, it's been my experience of 36 years in that environment that when new information rises, it's generally very welcomed, especially by the scientific community because you can use it to either reformulate new conclusions or to produce new hypotheses. And the situation that we're in here now is very, very similar to having data, asking for data, uh, and getting new information and now having the opportunity to act on it. Um, bottom line, again, from a pragmatic standpoint, applying a scientific method, right? Uh, and, uh, basically identifying a process and marching to that process. I, in my practice and engineering, would embrace getting new information, especially when asked for the information and denied. Um, when it's denied, you have an escalation process, we always have. And I'm looking at Tim because Tim is very well aware of that. Um, here, our escalation process is litigation or amicus curi. I agree with the suggestion and resolution of the two counselors that if we do not pursue, uh, the litigation, then at least pursue the amicus curi in order to put our opinion in and get information.
Thank you. Mike Keller? And Mike, are you representing, um, the South Burlington Business Association? Okay.
Thank you. Can you hear me? The South Burlington Business Association, the SBBA, was formed approximately 18 months ago to encourage a strong and vibrant business community in South Burlington and currently has approximately 90 members. The SBBA is of the opinion that the Air Guard here supports the vision and the, supports that vision of economic vitality and the placement of the F-35s at this base certainly contributes to this vision in the future. The SBBA does not support the city voting on the resolution to join the F-35 lawsuit. A matter of this significance should be vetted by the entire community via citywide referendum or similar process and not dealt with by the City Council over a three-week period and not by a poll of emails and conversations that counselors have had. The SBBA does support the obtaining of information related to noise abatement measures and safety information and feel there is ample time to do that without entering into litigation in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Carmen Sargent?
Um, my name is Carmen Sargent. I live at 21 Elizabeth Street, which is about one block from the airport. Uh, first, I'd like to speak to a little history. Um, I attended the meetings when the F-35 was in discussion about community support of basing it here or non-support. The City Council had voted against, came out with a resolution against the basing and then they had a follow-up meeting when the City Council changed. And at that meeting, there were probably 80% of the participants that came to Chamberlain School said that they did not want the F-35 to be based here, yet that City Council voted against the majority. So consensus is not always what, what one wants. I'm also the chairperson of Synapse, which is a committee that was created by the City Council to address sustainability and improvement of the Chamberlain neighborhood. $165,000 was allocated for that very purpose. It wasn't all city money, but some of it was. So the amount of money for this lawsuit is pretty, pretty paltry in comparison with that amount of money. I, as a member of that committee, um, speak in favor of this because one of the things that we're gonna be presenting to the City Council is for the city to address the health and safety of our community. And this money would go towards getting the information that we need to be able to address that. So please follow through and consensus is consensus is consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Rupel? Did I pronounce that right? Rupel. Sorry. I know, well, really is a tough last name, too.
First, I wanna thank Tom and Pam.
Is it Pam, it's Pat.
Pat. For, um, taking such efforts to be here. I vote against, um, joining the lawsuit. And I, I told someone that I thought this meeting was really useless tonight because I think you've already decided to join the lawsuit and that's why you tabled putting the vote to the public Monday night 'cause it's not needed, 'cause you're gonna vote tonight to join. And I think that's wrong. And I think, you know, you should work with the Air Guard and the firemen to get the answers and work with them on procedures on how, how to make us safe and that we shouldn't have to do a lawsuit to do that. And there are a lot of people here or at home tonight that I know could make it to this meeting who are definitely against. So you say your poll, but there are a lot of people whom I'm sure would vote if it were put to a vote, but just can't make it to these meetings. One of whom is my father, who is a veteran. And I do have a niece who's, um, in the Air Force. And I thank her and all of you. And I, I will say... And I will say the Air Force or the Vermont National Guard here makes me feel very safe. And I think we should support them.
Thank you. Mary Proventur?
Queen City Park, South Burlington. My issue is, today, we wouldn't even be here if the, if they didn't close the Plattsburgh Air Force Base and say, "We're going to have a new assignment for our guard." They changed the way the Air Force was. They closed our most strategic airbase. And then they had plans, which I think were covert plans, to cross the pond and start building hangars over here. And they had, I feel like they've had this in the works for a very long time. I feel like there's a new, you know, because in 1995, I used to hear the National Guard airplanes and fighter jets in there were very rare. Couple of times a weekend, you'd see somebody flying. So the purpose and the mission has changed. And so we have this, and we wouldn't be here if that hadn't occurred. And so now I feel like we have, the guard's mission has changed for our full-time military, and I don't believe military fighter jets belong anywhere on top of residential communities. And this does not have to do with that I'm not patriotic and I don't, you know, care about our country. It's that they, military fighter jets do not belong on top of residential communities. Now, they're Burlington's biggest tenant, and all of this, you know, could be avoided. It's just, you know, Plattsburgh had 3,447 acres. It was used as a military base since 1814. And so all of a sudden, in 1995, they decide they're going to close that. And now we're stuck in this, this fight with our, that we're fighting, you know, we have to protect ourselves from the military that we pay for, that we pay and support, and we have to protect ourselves from the very military that we support. I'm in favor of the lawsuit.
Thank you.
A small price to pay.
Art Glugo? Art? Oh, okay. James Lees?
I live in, I've- Thank you. My name is James Lees, and I've been living in South Burlington for the last 23 years. And I support the two resolutions that are before the council. The problem for our city is partly because the Air Force omitted information about noise mitigation and crash consequences from the environmental impact statement. It's not just the public. The Air Force's own decision-makers did not have the information when they were considering which among the six bases they should base the F-35, because they, their EIS didn't have the information. Why was it the toxic chemicals, particulates, and fibers that could be emitted in a crash and the fire produced by the thousands of gallons of fuel was omitted? We have an F-35 that has 42 times as much composite material as the F-16, and it also has a stealth coating around the whole plane. That stealth coating is going to be the first thing to catch fire. It's on the outside of the plane, in that huge fuel fire. What about the first responders? How long does it take for them to get there? Do they get there instantly if the crash is somewhere in the southeast quadrant or in Winuski? What about those 10, 15, 20 minutes before the fire is put out? That's when that stealth coating burns, and that composite material, those 8,600 pounds, turns into a toxic plume of toxic chemicals, fibers, and particulates. Burlington has 124,000 people living within five miles of the airport. Those are the people. Those are the people who are going to be hurt, and those are the people we need to protect.
Thank you. Now, I want to go back to, there were several people, I think, who signed up. Yes? You're all set? Oh, please come up. And is there anyone else who had signed up last week and would like to speak? Would you like to as well? Okay. Oh, we'll get you. That's next. So your name, please?
Lonnie Parish. Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. My name is Lonnie Parish, and I live at 911 Dorset Street, just down the road here in South Burlington. Lived there for several years. I'd like to strongly urge the council not to use taxpayer time and money to pursue this last-minute, ill-conceived motion to join a federal lawsuit against the Air Force. This motion is heavily laden with impropriety and ethical conflicts that have not been fully disclosed nor discussed publicly. If the true intention of this motion is to try and stall the F-35 indefinitely, I believe the public would be better served if the council would just say that instead of trying to cloak its intentions under the auspices of responsible government. The facts are these. The F-35 weighs 30,000 pounds with a maximum of 12,200 pounds of composite materials. The Federal Express 757 that comes in here every single night has more composite in it than F-35, plus it has four times more fuel. The F-35 has been flying all over the United States and has been since 2006. The safety risk to the public does not lie with the F-35. For example, the Boeing 757 has had more crashes than the F-35. Burlington isn't suing Federal Express or Boeing, I don't think. With respect to noise, the EIS clearly shows that the F-35 is quieter in the South Burlington area. The 65 DNL line is significantly smaller. Of the seven South Burlington locations studied in the EIS, six received quieter ratings.
Mr. Parish, 15 seconds.
Okay. Strongly believe in two things. One is the voting citizens of South Burlington. If the council goes forward with legal action, under the burden of this very shady and short notice process, I know they'll see right through the sham and act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go back to the list for, if there's no other South Burlington residents.
Jay Passack.
Yes. Oh, Jay. Come on up.
And then there was Kathy Murphy.
Oh, and Kathy, you were, okay.
Hello. I'm Jay Passack. I'm a resident of South Burlington in the Laurel Hill District. And I'm confused. It's my understanding that there's a small group, the anti-F-35, who is for this lawsuit. There's another group, the Green Ribbons, who are opposed to the lawsuit. But I, and the reason for my confusion is that I read the newspaper, I listen to the radio, I look on the internet, and I haven't heard a large cry from the overall community that we should join this lawsuit. We have two small groups, we have two groups opposed, and what one says, the other disagrees, and vice versa. I look at the five of you, including Pat and our chairman, as representatives of the overall community. You represent me, as well as the people in Spear Street, in Chamberlain, all over the community. You represent all of us. You know, if there was a large cry from the overall community to join this lawsuit, go for it. But there isn't. There's two small groups going back and forth, and that's it. I really oppose doing this. I recommend that you talk to our legislators, that you talk to the air guard, that you talk to the Air Force. We have time on this. But I don't hear the overall community wanting this. I hear small groups pushing for this.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Murphy. I live in the Chamberlain neighborhood. I also teach at Chamberlain School. And I think you get that people are scared because there's so many unknowns, and that's why emotions run high with this. And like the man who just spoke, I was really confused and went to the last meeting, not knowing whether to sign the for or against, because I just wanted to get information. And I'm finding that really hard to get, to know what's true. So what really prompted me to speak was that last time, I just felt the tone of the meeting was really disrespectful. And so first, I want to thank all the members of the council for your service to our community. I don't come to these meetings often, but I was appalled last week when Mr. Chittenden said that he got his first piece of anonymous hate mail. And other counselors shared that they had gotten nasty phone calls. I believe Mrs. Noack said, "We all get them." For that, I'm truly sorry. After sitting here for just four hours at the last meeting, I'm clear on one thing. I could not do the job that you have all volunteered to do. Given the abuse that all of you have taken from the public, no matter which side you're supporting, over the decisions you make and the countless hours you all put in, not just at meetings, but in doing the reading and research necessary to inform yourselves about many issues facing our city, I'm going to make a bold statement. I'm going to assume that you have all volunteered your time with good intentions. I'm going to assume that none of you has any hidden agenda or stands to gain financially or otherwise. I would not do your job. And I am guessing that most people sitting in the audience would not do your job, even if we were getting paid. I ask all of you to assume good intentions in each other, and for all our citizens to assume that as well. On this and many other issues, there's room to disagree, but in the end, we're going to be neighbors. So I read a lot of reports. I don't have as much information as all of you had. I'm hoping that I can trust your good intentions to make the best decision for us, and I hope that all of us will assume your good intentions.
Thank you. So now we'll go to people who don't live here. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Ken Boyd from 39 Meadow Road, South Burlington. I did speak a couple of weeks ago, but I'll make this very brief. You've probably heard it more tonight than you care to, but I am very disappointed with the council's, or members of the council's, method of using this, bringing this all to a head as it has come. In the future, I would hope the council has learned a lesson that any meeting or any discussion that has something to do with an issue of this magnitude, that everyone is included, that is not, and I thought you were splitting hairs, Helen, last week, and I'm sorry to single you out, but when you said that it was semantics, basically, that wasn't a meeting. A conversation, whether it's one-on-one or the group, it is, it is a meeting. And I think you need to be more respectful to your council members and the members of the South Burlington community. I'll just reaffirm the fact that I am very opposed to the lawsuit, and after listening to the three attorneys last week, I really see no benefit to us to jump into the suit at this point. There's really nothing to be gained, and I think all three of the attorneys pretty much stated that in their final, final comments. So I would be remiss if I didn't encourage you to strongly not get involved with the suit. And again, as I suggested earlier, that a task force be put together, someone from the council, from the city manager's office, our first responders, and a member of the community, to work directly with the FAA, with the air guard, and with the Burlington Airport. I don't think contention will get us anywhere other than possibly, and one other thing I have to challenge a little bit. You said that you had been assured that the mission would not go away or that there would, I think that's naive. In the event that a downsizing of military or the military has a change of plans, I don't think the gentleman who spoke to you makes those kind of decisions. So our, our mission could go away, quite honestly, and I think we need to be quite aware of that fact, because that's a $53 million budget and payroll that would go out the window.
Michael Mahoney? Is there anyone else from South Burlington? Oh, okay. Is that the last one? I mean, I'm not trying to skip over you. If you don't raise your hand, I can't see you. Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm Joe Moore. I'm moving to Cabot Court, right off of Dorset. I'm 26 years old, so I think I'm actually the youngest person who's spoken tonight. So I'm going to talk to you from a different perspective of my generation. If you look at the economy here, I graduated from St. Mike's. I have my bachelor's in history and economics. I have my master's in military intelligence. And if you look at the economy here, most of the people that I graduated from school with have moved out of Vermont because there is nothing here. So I oppose this lawsuit because why would you counter further economic growth to this region when people who are graduating from UVM and St. Michael's and other colleges in the region are just leaving because there is nothing here? They might stay for a few years until they get jobs, but then they leave and go away. All my friends live in Boston, DC, New York City. I'm one of the few kids from my class that still are around here. So I oppose this lawsuit.
And full disclosure, you're a member of the Vermont Guard? Okay. Full disclosure, Joe is a member of the Vermont National Guard?
Ah, yes. I am a member of the Vermont Air National Guard, and-
But you're speaking on your-
I'm not representing the Vermont Air National Guard. Speaking on my own.
Just want to make that clear. Okay. Thank you. All right. So now we'll go to-
Good evening. My name's Michael Mahoney. I live in Winuski, and I am a member of the Stop the F-35. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you this evening. The intent of the F-35 lawsuit is to get some answers and clarification to issues that were not sufficiently addressed in the EIS. Sometimes there are unintended consequences from action. As a result of the lawsuit, the US Air Force provided documents from the administrative record. Following Mr. Chittenden's research regarding emails, I would like to read a short chain of emails from Vermont Air National Guard officers found in the administrative record. These are in January of 2013. This is from Adam Wright. Sir, all, just forwarding the latest email from BTV's Part 150 consultant. Have we had a, have we had a chance to compile any of this yet? I did not move on this. Anyone? This is from Colonel Bazuski. I have not. This is from Gump, who is Colonel Finnegan. And sir, I have not responded either. My personal opinion is that I think we should delay providing data as long as possible. Rational, I do not think it is in our best interest to have yet another set of noise contours released to the public prior to the ROD. The ROD is a record of decision, regardless of what they look like. I know this is completely a civilian initiative, but it will only add to the confusion of the ignorant SOBs that are fighting the F-35 bedlam. That's from Colonel Caputo. Sir, I agree with Pooter. Pooter is Caputo. Any more added potential controversial information would not be good for us or this process. If we can delay until after ROD, I think we should. I have one question.
Mr. Mahoney, 15 seconds.
Thank you. I have a question. Are there, are these officers following orders, or is there an understanding to not disclose potential controversial information or not provide other data the US Air Force needs to make appropriate decisions regarding the EIS and the Vermont Air National Guard? Thank you.
Thank you. And I can't read this. It's something Seville, maybe, from Burlington? Is there a person from Burlington who signed up? Like the second one on the sheet? Who wish to speak? All right. I'll go to the next one. Thomas Fisher?
Could that be Frogga?
Oh, yes, probably it is. Pine Grove Terrace?
Yes.
Oh, Frogga, excuse me. Winuski, yes. I got that part. I just couldn't read your writing. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm Tom Frogga. I'd like to see that Mr. Chittenden, family pursuit and what you- I'd like to see Mr. Chittenden, family pursuit and what you're doing. I appreciate that. I served for this city, this great city, for 35 years as a police officer. And part of my role was emergency management coordinator. I also coordinated with the air guard and ran a camp called Mentoring Wings, which we learned about all types of careers for young people and had a great opportunity there. But during my years as a police officer, I also went to many accidents, many events, in which the first responders, which I was a part of, had to use the air guard equipment. And without that equipment, we couldn't respond. And that was not aircraft. Many accidents that occurred in this community was of great support. But we also had much training. We made rescue training, emergency training over the years. It was mandated by not just the state, but the air guard to make sure that we were all collaborating and ready. I believe that the city council should look at their emergency management plan, if they actually have one and have submitted it to the state, or make sure it's upgraded. We have an EOC center in this community. I don't think it's been tested very well. I believe that it should be. We should look at what's occurring in this community and Winuski. I live on the airport path where the aircraft fly right over my head. I can actually see the pilots in the cockpit as they fly over. They have never hurt our community. They have never hurt my family. I grew up in South Burlington when my family brought us here. My father was a professor at Champlin College, also an Air Force Reserve Colonel. We listened to the aircraft off Duvalve Street. My sister went to Chamberlain School. She became a magna cum laude graduate of Trinity College. It did not hurt us any. I strongly support that you stand behind your city and look at your emergency planning first before you go outside the city and look at other people's problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Andrew? Oh, no. I'm Drail Lee. Sorry.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to start off by saying I respect the guard and the work they do, especially the emergency services that they provide statewide for natural and man-made disaster. But I am opposed to the F-35 basing. I don't wish to malign the majority of VTANG employees due to the questionable behavior by some of the leadership, as has been revealed by the United States Air Force as a result of the F-35 right-to-know lawsuit. Some of these entries described unsupportive assertions by guard leadership as to the amount of mitigation that could be accomplished and the fact that some of the supposed mitigations were tried in the simulator and it did not work. In fact, one significant entry states that the results of the EIS indicate Burlington is the wrong answer of all the alternatives. Quote, "Why would you think that the noise at Burlington can be addressed with mitigation? Outside of purchase and relocation of those affected, I don't know what could be done." End quote. Another notes that, quote, "It is doubtful mutual aid partners are fully trained in responding," end quote. And I have to say, I find it curious that Winuski and Williston have received no joint training or were not mentioned in joint training with the guard for aircraft, even though they're at the ends of the runway and will be and are the most vulnerable. The United States Air Force honest evaluations about the inappropriateness of the F-35 basing would not have been possible without the F-35 right-to-know lawsuit. These are just a few of the many statements contained in the administrative records. I hope that the city will post the full record on its websites for all citizens to review. Vermonters have the right to know about environmental threats to its people and land. We want to know about GMOs in our food. We want to know about, sorry, PFOA contamination in our groundwater. And we want to know the truth about the F-35 basing's impact on our communities. I support the city of South Burlington joining the lawsuit.
Thank you. Frank Chioffi? Frank's right behind you. And Frank, are you representing anyone besides yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Frank Coffey, and I'm the president of GBIC, Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation. And we are the Industrial Economic Development Corporation, serving the people in municipalities of Chittenden County. We're a nonprofit. First of all, thank you for your service to South Burlington and to Vermont. I served in state government for Howard Dean and his cabinet for three years. At the same time, I served six years on the select board in St. Albans Town, so I understand what you're doing and what you're going through. I also have respect for those for and against this issue, and GBIC does as well. Been a little bit of misunderstanding about GBIC. We came about in the 1950s, when the mills were closing, to attract good manufacturing jobs and jobs to Chittenden County. We helped support and build the airport and other infrastructure. And just so you know, we have actually spent more time, money, and resources on stormwater and TIF creation, tax increment financing creation, than we have on this issue over the years. And those are two issues that are vital to the economic well-being of South Burlington. A lot has been said on both sides of this issue. Intervention at this point is too late. You have already spoken in the process, and it's nothing more than political grandstanding at this point. And you're being used by the attorneys on the other side of this issue in opposition. It's nothing more than trying to get into the record, trying to intervene in a process that's already gone. You've already stated your opinions in this process. It's too late. You're going to find that out in the process that it's too late. You've already spoken. So please, understand that South Burlington is already on record with this. Anything more, you'll find out in the process. The opposition has lost at every point along the way, and they'll continue to lose. Thank you.
I think this is Neil Candle from Williston? Is that right? Candle?
Helen, could we just point out that... Could we just point out that the GBIC does have amicus status in this case as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah?
... confusion of what's going on here. You aren't speaking to the overall... I appreciate all these people who are on the streets of Burlington speaking, both pro and, you know, pro and con. I do appreciate that. But you're not listening... You're listening to them, but you're not listening to the overall community.
Thank you. I believe you are listening to the whole community.
Can we have one person speaking? And we've got Neil, who has the podium right now.
I'd like to thank the Air National Guard for defending my right to raise my voice in protest, which I believe is the true sound of freedom. It's what you're defending. And my opinion is, is that we, my wife and I moved here. We had once lived right near Newburgh, a designated Air Force base with a runway almost twice as long as the runway in Burlington, making takeoff for F-35s easier. I believe that the bedding of the F-35s here is politically motivated, and I appreciate your joining if you do the lawsuit so that we can just get information to find out what the Air Force already knows about the F-35. And due not to any participation of the gentlemen that are here this evening from the Air National Guard, is withholding that information. All you have to do is go online to any site, including military sites, to find out... To find out the glitches and flaws in that plane. And as far as employment goes, I can appreciate the employment and the continued employment of the Air National Guard. But if there's an accident, the amount of loss in property and reputation of this area will be insurmountable in terms of building, building economically, building the population, and keeping people in this area. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I hope you do vote for joining the lawsuit.
Thank you. Nicole Citro from Essex Junction.
Hello, my name is Nicole Citro. I am a South Burlington business owner, but I am also the creator of the green ribbons for the F-35. Contrary to what some people may believe, I am just a woman with a website that I gave voice to the majority of Chittenden County residents, that they very much supported our air guard and the basing of the F-35 in Vermont. Basically, they trust the air guard. They have been here for 70 years now. They've always done right by this community, and they will continue to do right by this community. I obviously am against the lawsuit for a number of reasons, but I am particularly against the action of the South Burlington City Council because of the way that this came about. It was not transparent. And obviously, when you have a roomful of people and you're doing a very great job of making sure there's balance on both sides, but the fact is, is that this is something that should be going up to a vote and not being left to the personal inclination of board members. You need to hear from your community. Thank you.
And I think the final name... Oh, I'm sorry. There's also another one from Williston. Susan something or other on White Birch Lane? Is it? No? Okay. So I think the final one, unless someone feels moved to speak after this person, is Sharon Babadu, Colonial Drive in Colchester? Is she still there? Okay. So is there anyone else who would like to share their thoughts or... Yes?
I appreciate your work.
Can you give us your name?
Oh, yes. My name is Jean Bluto. I'm from Winuski. And I support both of the resolutions. And the reason I do is because I think new information came before you. If you were the president of the United States and you got information that there was a terrorist in some neighborhood, you'd check it out. You'd want more information. That's what I believe happened with you folks, because we are all getting new information. I feel like... I think there's a lot of fear here, and I think the fear is the guard. The guard is afraid. What are you afraid of? If there's nothing wrong with this machine, and there's nothing wrong with this safety record of it, if there's nothing... What is the harm finding out? I don't understand why everyone is all so up and twisted about this. This is a NIPA lawsuit to get information from the Air Force that cities have asked over and over for, and they would not provide it. Why? I don't know. They were in a hurry to base it here, I think, before we saw the administrative record. Thank God. Thank God those people sued. You... You know, I always respected the Vermont National Guard, and I appreciated their work. I'm going to have to think about it now. Read the administrative record. Read the administrative record. Read the administrative record. Read the administrative record. Read it. It will make your toes curl with this Vermont Air National Guard has done to this community. Read it. Read it. Read it. Read it. That's all I have to say. Read it.
That is out of line.
Well, we were pretty civil till the very end, so thank you. I apologize for that emotion. If there is nobody else who wishes to speak, is that clear? Is that correct? Okay. Pat, are you still with us?
I am, and I would certainly like the opportunity to speak.
I would like to give you that opportunity. Right before you start, let me just kind of explain what... Or summarize what the other councillors talked about, so you have a context.
Before we do that, is it possible to have our city lawyer, Jim Barlow, come up and just give a brief overview of the difference between being a plaintiff in the lawsuit and having the status of amicus curi? Would that help the audience at least to understand there is a difference? And I just want you to know that.
Well, I think we went over that pretty well.
Well, I think we did too, but I get this... I'm getting the sense that some people don't understand the difference, but if they don't care about that difference, that's fine. Then we don't have to have them come up. Okay.
So, Pat, what we did as a council is Tim discussed... Tom opted not to offer his resolution, and in short, he doesn't believe we should vote on any resolutions. Is that right? Is that clear?
Not before the public is heard with a ballot measure. This needs to go to the public for a vote.
So that was Tom's position. Then Tim shared his resolution, which you've read, and it would have the city of South Burlington join the lawsuit as a participant, amicus curi. And he talked about why. Megan shared her thoughts about why we should join amicus as well. And I went over my resolution that proposes, as you've read, to work in a cooperative manner with the Air Force to come up with a solution to the funding pieces around safety and noise. So that was kind of a summary. Tom would like to say something else.
Just to be clear, Pat, also Councilor Emory has withdrawn her resolution as well.
So before us, basically, are two resolutions. And then I attempted, because I didn't know if we'd ever get you on the line, to sort of summarize it. I read for the public the, I think it's five action steps that you outlined in your comments and proposal. So if you would speak to them, that would be helpful, and then... Okay?
Yes. If I might ask, did we have representatives from the guard?
Representatives from where?
The guard.
The guard. Oh, yes.
Vermont National Guard.
Yes. There are two, four, six, seven in uniform, and there's at least one... I think there's at least two in the audience, one of whom spoke. And we started the public hearing with Major General Cray giving about a five-minute message, I guess, on behalf of the guard.
Okay. That's fine.
And I'm sorry we missed that.
May I start now, or...
Yes, you may.
Okay, fine. First of all, let me apologize. I have been at the Sanford Airport in North Orlando since 5:00 this morning, trying to get here. And they canceled a flight to Burlington, and then I was on another flight to Plugsburg. And we started to pull out, and they had problems with the engine, and we had to go back and on the third plane. And now I'm pulled over at the island's swimming area, so I can perfectly see we're not having the engine running up in near the carsway. One of the things that I want you to know, and I said a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to preface this because I do not support any resolution. I support a non-litigious way that we should go through this. And what I've done is I've tried to go out to find the answers that we were looking for, not just grabbing bits and pieces, not taking someone who says, "I'm an expert," and, you know, what... I really wanted to get into it and find out people that were courageously up to date and knew the things that were going on, as far as safety, as far as noise. And I did hear all of the concerns about that. And that is why I brought Mr. Plugsberg in. As a matter of fact, I reached out to the guard, found out no one else had. And I was... And I was rather surprised at that, Madam Chair, and the reason that I was is that who better should we be relating with when we're talking about the planes than the people who actually fly them, maintain them, and service them for, and for the country? But anyway, I reached out because I wanted to have some people there that could answer questions that no one else on our panel, none of us experts, none of the five of us, are. The reason that I believe that we don't need to have a resolution is that I believe we've got a collaborative, quality spirit now. I know that the Adjutant General has reached out when I was... He reached out to me. I believe he's reached out to you, to talk with you, and he's open to speaking with anyone. We have the head of the wing command, Colonel Diney, who was in with the General Clark and spoke with us. They have been nothing but prepared to give us answers. Final decision, if an F-35 comes here, that decision's made. But what they wanted was to work with us to ensure that they are, because they are part of our community. My feeling is, in hearing all of the, everyone that I've heard this evening, I think we've done them a disservice, because I don't believe everyone was upfront in talking about our feelings were, not only Dr. Lekin or Cam Chaney, but I think no one has really been upfront with us. They don't want the plane to come, or they do. And I think it's a lot more than just saying, "We're looking at this piece, and we're looking at that." So I am very disappointed that I don't see that we have been open and forthright, all of us, as to where we're coming from. But what I'm trying to say tonight is, to everyone in the city, if there is going to be a joining in this, we need to have the city go on it. Now, I understand that we're very close to the time, and it's too late to get it, it will come up in the next couple of weeks. But we also heard, and we heard from two different attorneys, because I sat there and took notes, we heard last week that there will most probably be an appeal, one side or the other, no matter what church class it comes up with, there will be an appeal. There is time out there if you need to, and I think Richard has the steam weighing in on it. I personally don't want to have five people, are very strong, we're all strong and passionate about our feelings about this, whether it's because people are just opposed to the mission of the Guard or what have you, but I don't think this is a five-person decision. I know we are elected to decisions, and we make some pretty heavy ones, but this one here deserves weighing in. This is an economic factor for our community. It is our reputation that is out there as well. It is safety. It is noise. It's a concern, I'll say it again, others should run away, as any other chancellor does, closer maybe. And I'm looking at this, and I'll close with this part. Yes, I believe that there are five things we need to do. We need to cooperate and work with the airport to make sure that what Jan Richardson has put to set up and go forth, that that happens. That's a collaborative spirit among all the communities around, among the leaders in the community. We need that. We need to have our city manager, Kevin Dorn, in a good relationship, not only with the airport, but with the air... And we have that. I think it's clearly evident, but when asked if someone could come, it wasn't just one. Even our head coach asked if he could have time. So I look at this and say, we've got probably the best opportunity here with the people and the collaboration and the cooperation to get the answers we need. Now, I don't realize some of the other chancellors in the past couldn't get answers or couldn't get their cooperation. We can't change a thing that happened up until now. But I can tell you, I don't believe any place that we have had a better point in time to work together. I will deceive if happened. I say no resolution is worth dividing our city, and we need to have community-wide support, and it be it one way or the other, but let's let the community decide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Pat, can I just ask? You have five recommendations that, from my perspective, we can continue to address those, whether we join a lawsuit or not. Is that your understanding? Or do you believe that...
Well, one of the items that I found interesting on yours, and I think on Megan's, this 27 or 2,900 households, I have information that was presented to me by Director of Operations, Nick Londo, and that number is three times what they have. And they have done it, and it's on page 59, I think, of their 2015 slash 2020 reports that I'm showing, I'm not going to give you directly, but I'd be glad to give it. So we've got some inconsistencies in here. And the other information that we, a sum of chance of our council that we set out and giving us a summary of what was in there, we've got some inconsistencies in there that say, no, we don't have this significance by laws of potential danger through this plane. So, you know, we can have all of the information that we would like to have, but I'm looking and saying right now, I don't think we need to step forward and have a litigious situation. I think we need to reach across the aisle to people and say, "Let's get together. Let's pull together. We have a wonderful community. We have a great air guard."
Okay, thank you. Well, council members, we have, I guess, since Pat's suggestions are not a resolution, but rather steps that we could take at any time, we don't necessarily have to vote on them tonight, but we do have two resolutions.
I would like to make a formal motion. I believe the citizens haven't voted for this, and they want to vote for this. Looking at what Winuski did on this very same issue, they conducted a ballot measure.
Can we not have applause so we can have a conversation, and Pat can hear it? Because I know when you applaud, she can't hear anything.
I move...
No, that's right, I can't.
I move that on the very next possible election, be it August 6th, that we ask the residents of this city, the voting public, if they support us joining the city and all of its residents to the Stop the F-35 Private Coalition lawsuit. This lawsuit is designed to prevent the basing of the F-35, which is a multimillion-dollar question. The community cares about this. We ask the community for all major questions. When we pass a budget, when we go out for a bond for $1.9 million on emergency equipment, the right thing to do is to ask the public, "We'll have time to join this. We can join during the appeal, or we can take litigious action at that time later." I'm making a formal motion that we submit a ballot measure item on this very topic to the people of South Burlington.
Well, that motion is on the table, so your motion was tabled, so you need to bring it off the table. That should be your first motion. It was tabled.
Which...
The petition to have a...
That wasn't my petition. That was from a resident.
Okay.
So this is a new motion. Pat, do you second this motion?
I need a clarification on that because of the clapping that took place before. So Tom, may I ask, are you, I am sure proposing a vote, but what is the other part to it?
So the other part to it, and I believe this is what Chair really was just speaking to, 17 citizens of this city who have been very concerned over this topic, led by Tyler Barnes, who reached out to me, asked what he could do to show his concern for how this conversation has come before us. I said, "One thing you could do, somewhat quickly, is that 15 signatures submitted to the city manager for a topic to be discussed on the council agenda can be forced to be discussed." This past Monday night, he put on the agenda a discussion item on whether or not we should have a ballot measure to ask the city residents whether or not they support us joining this lawsuit. That was tabled, but this is a separate motion. If we want to bring that back on, we certainly can. I just, I don't know what needs to happen logistically. We just need to ask the people on this question. There's a vote on August 6th. I make the motion.
I would accept that proposal.
Okay, we have a motion that's...
Is there time for discussion?
Yes, I'm just getting to that. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded, is their discussion.
Yes. If there was a desire to join the lawsuit as a plaintiff, I would agree that it should go before the voters. But since my resolution is not to be a plaintiff in the lawsuit, it's to be a friend of the court and to provide some information that is amicus curi. It is different, but it is a form of participation. I just want to make that point. It doesn't mean that we are one of the plaintiffs. It means that we provide information, and we sit back and watch. It is too late, in my mind, to become a plaintiff, and that's why I'm offering this resolution. And I've thought about this very, very hard since this issue has come up. I'm not doing this lightly. I think the lawsuit has some merit, and a lot of you disagree with that, and I fully, I feel your emotion on that. But I think it does have some merit, and I think that we have to inject our opinion into this case in order to hedge our bets to cover all the bases. That's all I'm trying to do. I have the utmost respect for this team and what they do, but it's not about them per se. Their mission will remain. The Air Force has already said that. They've said it clearly a time and time again. I am just proposing that we not join as plaintiff, but instead provide amicus curi, the same thing that the GBIC has done. We would like to have that role as well at this late point in the game on this lawsuit. So that's why I don't think that we need to have a vote for amicus curi, but I would certainly want to have a vote for plaintiff, but that's not what I'm proposing tonight.
You mean a ballot item?
A ballot item.
There are 18,000 residents that just want to have a vote on whether or not the city wants to join this lawsuit. I heard James Dumont at our last meeting say the reason why he supports and has been pushing hard for the City of South Burlington to join this lawsuit under amicus curi or as a full plaintiff is to use our good name to curry influence over the judge's decision. I heard him say that. So the city of this...
I...
I heard him argue or say that he supports the city, or he sees that the judge could take influence from the City of South Burlington lending its name to this lawsuit. So before we, five councilors elected, not on this issue, take action on this, the public wants to be heard. So let's ask them.
Well, let's clarify, then, what the lawsuit is all about.
Just one more thing, okay? The City of Winuski held the vote, and they voted to join as plaintiff.
One count.
One count, and I'm offering two counts, okay, which is noise and safety. Two of the 10, I think, that are in that lawsuit. The City of Winuski went through the process, had the vote, and are joining as full plaintiff on the lawsuit. We, I don't believe that we have the time to become full plaintiff, and we don't have time for the vote. This is the alternate proposal to be amicus curi. And it is very significant to me that the city government of Winuski went through the process and is a plaintiff in this lawsuit today as it goes before the judge. We do not have the opportunity to be full plaintiff because I'm not proposing it and because we're not going to have a ballot on it. I am proposing that we go in as amicus curi because, like I said, it hedges our bets and covers all the bases and gives us all the information that I think we need.
And I think that's what I'd like to clarify, is what this lawsuit is about and not about. And certainly, we've heard lots of testimony that questioning everyone's motive, I guess, on this council about what they're trying to accomplish. People can question one's motive, but I don't know how else you can be more clear by expressing what it is. And if you don't believe any of us, I guess that's your prerogative. But I am telling you, and I told you originally, that I felt it important to join the lawsuit because it was a lawsuit directed at the Air Force to complete the NEPA reporting and answer the questions for my perspective or my need around safety, health, and noise.
Thank you.
Pat, just a second. You will get time, okay? And so that is what I am proposing and supporting, that we join that amicus. It is not to stop the basing of the F-35 because it's coming. It's, I'm using this opportunity to position the city, as well as Winuski, with the best information we can get that has not been forthcoming from the Air Force, and that's not a reflection on the Guard because they are not part of the lawsuit.
Thank you.
But, excuse me, Pat, I really will let you say something. I just want to finish. Please. Now she screwed up my thinking. So I believe that that's part of my job as a counselor, as all our jobs are, to really ensure the safety, the health, the well-being of our citizens. And I believe getting that information will help us do that. It has nothing to do, as far as I'm concerned, from my interest in becoming amicus to the lawsuit about stopping the F-35 from coming here. Other people may have that belief. That is not my position, and Tim and Megan can speak for themselves, but that is not my position. We were asked originally, and I voted twice, about the basing. This is not about the basing. This is about getting the information that we feel we need to be prepared to be partners with the Guard and other EMS or first responder groups to protect our citizens. Maybe we will find out that we don't need any more information, and we certainly had a wonderful and very complete presentation today, very impressive. We did a great job about the capability of the firefighting and first responder mission of the Guard at the airport, and I'm very impressed and helpful with that. But there are other issues, I believe, and I certainly think there's some noise mitigation that has nothing to do with firefighting that we need to know. So, Pat, you may now speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. One of the items is silent, and I hear everything you're saying, and Tim, I agree that, you know, amicus curi is when you are presenting, as you said, our opinion, our findings, whatever. And that's what I'm getting at. It's our, and it is not all of our. It is by the majority, we understand, on the council. It is still a very small number compared to our city. That's item number one, and that's why I'm looking at that. I don't feel that decision is appropriate now. We also heard from at least one attorney, when I specifically asked, could we file an amicus curi following, if there was, if we didn't do it now, could we follow it if there is a need, if we, if this lawsuit is accepted by the judge? And he said, "Yes, we could." So I'm looking at it and saying, we are really close to the judge making this decision on this. Signing on to peace right now, I see serves no purpose. None of the attorneys showed that in coming in at this point, at least what I looked at, versus major significance on that. I think it is being a decision being made by a minority of our residents. We have heard from both sides. Everyone is passionate about this. I'm looking and saying, I think we conduct the information we need without doing amicus, without doing a lawsuit, with just reaching out and asking for cooperation. I don't want to shut down communication. If there was something that was stuck that said, "The mission will continue," I would like someone there to perhaps ask the Guard, "Is there an opportunity that the numbers could be cut back?" And if we would lose significant numbers in the event or potentially... And if we would lose significant numbers in the event, or potentially in the event that the mission ever did not come to pass here, could we work people? I have been told that. And that's why I'm looking at it, saying, these are, these are our, our families. So I'm close right now in saying, no, Tim, I don't support amicus right now. We do leave the door open, we can. If the suit does not go the way that it's unwanted, we leave the door open to support the Guard going forward. Just closing decisions.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion? Tom?
I would just like to restate what I heard Pat said, and add one more thing, is we have the option to join as amicus curi during an appeal process, and if there is no appeal process, it means the matter is resolved. So we have an option to do this after we ask this public. I just want that in the record. We could have a vote before joining as amicus curi. And then the other point is, Council, Chair Reilly, that's part of my concern with how this has come before the public. I just feel that it's been presented in a misleading way. This lawsuit is entirely about the basing of the F-35. This is the avenue, the only avenue available to opponents of the F-35 to prevent the basing. So to say anything else is, is what I would characterize as misleading. So this lawsuit that we are about to vote to join is about stopping the basing of the F-35, amicus curi or otherwise. If we join to it, we are speaking for eighteen thousand residents who have not had a chance to weigh in on this. I strongly, I strongly implore us, let us please have a vote before the public. And then if it goes that they want us to join this lawsuit as a full plaintiff, I will support that. I'm here to represent the people of this city, but they want to be heard. This is a multimillion dollar question. So my motion, and I'm done.
All right.
Since Counselor Chittin insists that this is about the basing, I do want to speak. I have no reason to believe that this is about the basing of the F-35. I have read through the briefs. I have seen the requests. The requests do not say, stop the basing. The requests say, give information to the plaintiffs and make that information public so that we can respond adequately in mitigation and, and first responder response and emergency planning. And I want that to be clear, that that is also my motive. I take issue with any suggestion that there has been a lack of transparency. I find that Chair Reilly has been immensely patient and immensely open to concerns for more input, more time, when, as you know, we had very little time in order to respond to this request. And I, I have only admiration for the way that she has handled these meetings, and I believe that our discussion has been, for the most part, respectful, and I ask you to maintain that. I ask you also to maintain the tenor of this, of, of the issue before us, which is not pro or against basing, but rather, can we spend a few thousand dollars in order to have South Burlington's interests represented?
Please.
It is not, it is not one-
One at a time, please.
It is not 1.9 million dollars. It is not even close to the amount of money that we paid on several other things without going to you. This is a lawsuit about information. And as I heard Chair Reilly say, as I heard Counselor Barrett say, and as I said myself, it has everything to do with safety and with noise mitigation, and as the representatives of people in the city who are concerned about those two items, I feel that it is a small price to pay in order to have answers to those questions, and it is nothing further.
Tom?
The plaintiffs of this lawsuit are, are completely and absolutely against the, the F-35. The seventh listed plaintiff is the Stop the F-35 Coalition. Every one of the current plaintiffs that spoke this evening stated they do not want the, the F-35 based here. This is a lawsuit that the only way that the F-35 could be stopped, this is the only path that they could pursue that. I, I just take issue with, again, the packaging I just heard again, in this artificially urgent scenario.
Packaging is the briefs. If you've read the requests, Tom, it is not there. You keep repeating it, but it is not there. I have read it, and I have read it again, and I urge you to reread it, please.
I have. And I asked lawyer Dumont, Attorney Dumont, last week if this was the only path that opponents of the F-35 could pursue to stop the basing, and I believe he confirmed that this is the only path that could be pursued to delay for ultimate denying the basing of the F-35. I, I just want to be transparent, and that's what this action is about. So to say anything else is where I'm taking issue, and that's why I want the public to be heard after they understand the issue, and that's why I'm motioning for a vote.
Any further discussion?
There's a motion on the floor, so-
There's a-
I've spoken, but I'd like to-
Well, I, I think now is the time for the counsel.
Well, here's the point.
Really, please, no. The council will-
Are you operating under Roberts rules?
Well, not totally, I guess.
If you are, vote.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
Pat, are you needing to say something more or wishing to?
Yes. And I know we've got a motion on the floor, and we're supposed to be discussing portion that Tom had, but I'd like to just add a piece line to this. I am still pointed that the information that's been brought before the council never seems to be enough, and the target keeps moving. We've had as many as six or seven different resolutions put out there. I could not, in good conscience, turn around and vote for any of them because there were inaccuracies in some of those areas, including the amicus. Now, that being said, I stand with Tom on this. I propose that there be, under a term of sitting, no resolution, voted on, let it go to be a plaintiff, and let's bring it to the people who are not just, should go into this after the case started at the court level. Stop quote. Remember everyone, last person that joined in was April 20th of 2016. Please, coming in much weaker for this? Sure, we can turn around and say, it's only going to cost us a certain amount of money. No one's sitting on that channel, including me, knows the exact amount, or knows the impact. And furthermore, what I heard tonight was, oh, with 150,000 spent on, you know, on sin aspect, how much does that take them, and how much takes from the Regional Planning Commission? Please, let's be honest. Okay, so that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Any other comments?
All I say is that obviously we have all confided in our consciousness, consciences, and I think we're prepared to vote.
To be clear, we're voting on the motion to have a ballot measure item.
Right. All those, are we ready for the vote?
Could you just repeat what the, what the motion is?
I move that we have a ballot measure to the residents of South Burlington at the next possible time, which hopefully is the August 6 primary.
Night.
August 9.
August 9th.
Night. August 9th. Asking the citizens of South Burlington if we should join this lawsuit.
As plaintiff for amicus curi?
I, I'll make two motions on both. You want to ask plaintiff?
Make two motions on both.
Well, so what's your motion right now, for plaintiff?
For plaintiff.
Or either, just say either?
For either.
For either, okay.
Okay.
So you have a motion, and she seconded it, right?
Right, right. I'm going to vote against this, not because I don't think the public weighs in on issues, but I think this sets a precedent that would really be problematic for how the city determines or the council determines when and how and if to spend money on these things. As many of you know, we are currently being sued by the city of Burlington over the evaluation of the airport. That, we were being sued, so we needed to respond. However, the city council had the opportunity at one point to make a decision whether to-
Settle.
-settle in, in an agreement that the majority, all of us, felt was not this same group, but Pat, myself-
Myself.
And, and Megan were part of the, the council then. It was going to cost several hundred thousand dollars if we went to court. Now, we did not decide to have a referendum about whether we should spend several hundred thousand dollars to pursue, pursue this, but we made that decision because we felt it was in the best interests of the community not to take the, the agreement or the proposal from the city of Burlington, which would have ended the lawsuit, and instead gamble on taking it to court, spending that money to hopefully get a better outcome. But there's never ever a guarantee that your suit is going to end in your favor, but we felt that that was important. I feel this, this, we're talking about a couple thousand dollars, and it's information. This is not about basing. And, and I'm, I'm going to oppose starting a precedent that every time a contentious issue comes up, we run to the public. We have certain rules where we do for bonding, but-
Paying for it, ma'am. Out of our tax money.
Excuse me, please. So are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
I would like to make two remarks to your discussion point there. I, I just, I would not compare this action to the Burlington Airport suing us. They initiated, and there was not this widespread passion on this issue.
I, I tend to disagree, having heard from many residents in my part of town, there's a lot of passion on this issue.
On this issue? And that's why I want to vote-
I know, on also the airport issue.
On the tax assessment value of the properties of the airport?
On the fact that the airport sued us, yes.
But they, they sued us, so we had to react. This is us taking an action. It's completely-
And our response could have been- But there's also a lot of passion, Tom. You might not be aware, but I've been present for many years, and there's a lot of passion on that issue.
And can, can I just interject that it, it is a parallel item, but it is not totally related to city business, but the school board did spend $40,000 appealing the methadone clinic to the state Supreme Court, and that was without any sort of a vote from the city as well. So this is not unheard of, and there are some controversial things like this that come up that don't get votes on them. I just want to bring that up.
Well, we did have a nonminding vote, and we have all heard about it, that, so we've been reminded of it by many people from the South Burlington community watch about another area, and so this is not without precedence, please.
Okay, well, are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
August 9th would still give us time to join.
All, all in favor of this ballot item? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. And since, could, could I just highlight the fact that since, since Counselor Noack is calling in on the phone, that I think we have to have a voice, have her, voice her vote separately, just because-
Yes, I will-
Since it's back, you have to have a roll call.
Oh, a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
So you're the clerk, will you call the roll? Pat, we're going to have a roll call vote.
Pat, we're going to have a roll call vote because you're, you're on electronically. I think it's required.
It is.
It is, it is.
So should we go just, okay, so ask each person?
Yes.
Counselor Chittin, how do you vote?
I vote to ask the people whether or not they want us to join this lawsuit.
It's either aye or nay?
Yay.
Aye. Counselor Emery?
Nay.
Counselor Reilly?
Nay.
Counselor Noack, how do you vote?
I vote yes, yes.
And I vote nay.
So that, that proposal has failed. We'll move on to their two remaining proposals.
Whole thing was a sham. Shouldn't have wasted our time.
Okay, why don't we start with the amicus? Tim's proposal? The resolution to participate? Do you want to make the motion?
Yes. I move that we adopt the resolution to participate in the F-35 National Environment Policy, Environmental Policy Act litigation as amicus curi.
I will second that. Any discussion?
I would, yes. I, I would encourage the city residents of South Burlington to start a petition to put this as a ballot measure item on the next possible election.
I have a question on this, clarification.
Okay, Pat?
What will it include? My question, point of order. What will it include in the amicus?
What, does it include the resolu-, you don't have the resolution?
I, I am trying to locate it, but Tim, can you just give me a synopsis of what it includes? What is, and we are asking the court to hear from us.
We, it says the, the city and the residents have important interests and concerns arising from the noise impacts and public safety risks presented by the operation of the F-35 at BIA. And the aforementioned interests and concerns have not been adequately addressed and considered by the Secretary of the Air Force through the FEIS as required by, required under NEPA.
Okay. I'm trying to, and I saw that two other items have been deleted. Okay, I have it.
Okay.
Okay. So is there any more discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll?
I will call the roll call. Counselor Chittin, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counselor Emery?
Yay.
Counselor Reilly?
Yay.
Counselor Noack?
Nay.
And I vote aye.
Okay, so that's three, two, in favor of adopting that resolution. The final resolution, where is it?
To the top.
Right, and this is the resolution to work-
Point of order. We will be filing a, or posting a dissenting opinion regarding this resolution, and we'd like that to be on the website, the city website, against joining as amicus curi.
The next resolution is, this is to basically ask or direct the, our congressional delegation to obtain federal funds for noise mitigation for the residents of South Burlington and the schools in the affected zones, and federal funding for safety equipment and training for first responders.
I move that we approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Yes.
So I want to say that I, I liked a lot of this resolution. I did. I just, I don't like how it's come about. I, I just still have major concerns with the process of how this issue was introduced, so I, I cannot vote for this, only because I, I don't have time to validate all of the information that's included in the premise. And the third argument, I think, was also addressed with a lot of our meetings today. But I wanted to say that I, I agreed with a lot of the sentiment of this resolution. I just, I can't vote for it today because of the way it's been introduced, and I think we need more time.
Okay.
I have a comment as well before I vote. I do support what Tom just mentioned. I feel that there are some items in there. It's not just simply taking that fourth item, Ellen, and doing that. It's adding more to it. I believe if you have adopted the amicus right now, there is no need for this at this
I totally disagree with that statement, and I would hope that Counselor Chittin and Counselor Noack would look at this resolution very closely to understand that it is a parallel path that tries to affect some results for the city that would not be obtained through the litigation itself. So I think that if you have a conscience about how we're going to deal with the future and the two distinct elements of, of why we are joining amicus curi to this litigation, that you should at least vote in favor of this resolution to show your support for the city of South Burlington and its residents.
Well, I can tell you right now, the 2,963 households is the inaccurate number. You've received different information than that on the airport, so who is it? And where did the 2,963 come from?
From the, the final environmental impact statement that was published by the U.S. Air Force.
Well, that is not what we have received as far as the airport. Who falls within the 65, 70, and 75 DVA lines, DNO lines, rather?
Of the F-35 or the F-16? The numbers are different.
I'm looking under both lines because we have been shown that the F-35 could have a narrower effect on areas, you know, and-
Yes.
So I can't, I can't, I can't adopt that I would approach to this.
Not all of the households, as you know, are located within South Burlington, as many of them are, and this is the number from the most recent environmental impact study, so I, I don't know why the airport doesn't have the up-to-date numbers. Pat?
I'm not quite sure why it is so different, and perhaps before any vote on this is, we better find out what the right- better find out what the right number really is, don't you think?
I think that this is, it comes from the census, and I believe that it was even redone in order to reflect the most recent census.
Well, then maybe that should be removed. The number should be removed.
Then let's vote.
Another discussion point. Another discussion point is that there is no time pressure and no urgency for this to pass. It doesn't have anything to do with the lawsuit. I move that we table this until our next meeting so that we can further understand this third resolution, as I believe a lot of that has been addressed with the testimony that was heard after this was introduced. And I also believe that some clarity on where these points are made in the premise could also be hashed out. I don't see reason for us to take this tonight. I think we could delay this to the next meeting so that more clarity for the entire public and the council could be had.
I feel confident that we have used the numbers provided to us through the United States Air Force's environmental impact statement, that those are the best figures we could hope to have, and I am prepared to vote for this tonight.
I have, I have a suggestion. Since we are making the request of our congressional delegation, have they been contacted by any of you?
I have spoken with Leahy's office. I have not spoken with the other two.
If we are going to ask them for support, I would like to tell them as quickly as I have time before we pass a resolution and know whether or not it's in our purview that we could do this. That's just one more item I would raise to table until we clarify information in here. It's not that we don't want to have help for our community. Please don't misunderstand me. But let's do it so that we are trying to not run on something through that we haven't thought through and gotten information ahead of time on.
There is no railroading here. All of the figures are assigned to the sources, and so if there are other bodies that have different numbers, I don't think that would conflict with the resolution before us tonight.
Let's leave the numbers out. Let's just talk about item four, with the congressional delegation. I would like to give them the courtesy of talking with them first before we pass a resolution demanding that they go after.
Well, I think that that's what the, item four is asking, that we contact them.
Right. What's the difference between passing the resolution and contacting them? It's the same thing.
Yes.
And I would be talking to go with anyone to any of these processes and talk with their staff.
So let's ask, without this resolution, city manager, board-
And we should have a couple of talks with someone to talk with them.
I didn't hear.
Megan would like to call the question.
I made a motion to table it.
You can't, it's already been, have a motion and a second on the table.
So we have to vote on this and then table it. I mean-
Table takes precedence, and I also made it before that motion.
You can table it.
All right. So the motion is to table this. Are you ready for that question? Even though this motion has been made at the prior-
I will second the motion to table. Until we at least find out if we have something we can go after.
Can we have one person talking at a time? Pat, I will let you speak as long as you want, but I think it would be helpful if I should ask you. Okay, it's very hard to do it by phone.
She might not be able to hear.
I'm sorry, I didn't know someone else was speaking. I apologize.
Okay, I know it's-
It's very difficult on a telephone to find out what someone's saying, okay?
It truly is, especially on a cell, because it doesn't act like a landline all the time. So, but we had another discussion going on.
I had a procedural question. Since that motion has already been made and failed, are we allowed to make that motion again?
No, this is to, his motion was to table this.
That was the first motion that Tom made, that all seven meetings-
I thought his first motion was to table everything.
Table everything.
Wasn't it?
Table all of this resolution.
But Pat wasn't.
Against that.
But Pat wasn't online at that time. But we voted anyway because we had a quorum.
Right. So I guess we have already taken care of this issue, and it was defeated. So now we have this resolution to support. I would just like to say, I appreciate that you're concerned about the numbers. I do think we've had considerable time to think about these things, discuss them, and look at the documentation and check that out. I also think it's, it's kind of odd to check out with our congressional delegation, is it okay if we ask you to do something? I think a resolution, this resolution is very respectful, and it asks them to obtain as best they can dollars for some really important costs related to having military aircraft at our commercial airport and have that shared and the impact. So I don't think it's necessary to ask their permission to ask them to do something for us.
Please, for yourself, in my mouth, that is simple what I said. What I asked was, did we go in and talk to them? I asked.
Oh, I think we should very much deliver this resolution in person and have that conversation. I would support that if that was what you were saying. I thought you wanted us to chat with them before we voted on this. I misunderstood, and I apologize. Are we ready for the vote? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Right. We're going to have a roll call vote. Counselor Chittin?
Nay.
Counselor Emery?
Yay.
Counselor Reilly?
Yay.
Counselor Noack?
Nay.
Could you repeat that, please?
No.
Okay.
Nay.
I vote aye.
M-A-Y, nay.
Okay. So the vote is 3-2, and the resolution passes. Is there any other business before the council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll have to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for being, I think, almost entirely polite and thoughtful.